We will officially start the meeting. Can I just ask everybody to silence their cell phones or turn them off so that we're not interrupted? That would be great, thank you. So I will make a motion to start our HPD meeting for today, August 9, 2021. Do I have a second?
My second.
Okay, member Sur?
Yes.
Member Mauro?
Yes.
Member Harrington?
Yes.
Member Paula?
Yes.
And Chairperson Coe?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, so I just have to ask, is there anybody here who needs to recuse themselves for any application tonight? Um, I don't know if I'm gonna bring this up. Jorge Crizolo, who's here for a sign, is a good friend of mine. I don't have any trouble with making a decision, but if you think I should recuse?
Only if you are, have some kind of financial interest in the outcome of the application.
Not today. No, no, I don't. No, okay, so I will sit in for that. All right. And everybody else is fine with all the applications, there's no recusals needed?
Right.
Okay. So let's start, bring our seven chain place sign to the table. Is there somebody here? Hi, come on up. Come on up. Oh, well, that's fun. You can just pull that chair out and have us see.
Join the tribe.
Caitlin. Hi, Caitlin.
Yes.
Hi Caitlin.
Hi.
I'm Lisa. I'm here to meet the board.
Okay.
My board.
Hello.
We're very happy that you're gonna have your salon at Chain Place. We're really excited about that.
It's been there already.
Oh, yeah.
Yep, true.
Oh, true.
Yeah, okay, yes.
Yep. Okay. Yeah. So you are going to be changing the sign?
Yep, just changing it, updating it to our new logo.
Okay. And is the size of the sign any different than what's there now?
No.
So it's exact same size?
Mm-hmm.
Is the shape the same?
The shape is similar, but the one that we have currently just kinda has like some rough edges. So basically, just, you know.
All around, okay. This Aveda at the bottom, is that new?
I believe that is new. Yes.
Yes. There's no, on the existing sign, Aveda is on the, on the side.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So you took that up. And that sign is just at one location? Let's see.
Yes. Yep, just the one.
And it's five inches thick?
Oh. It looks like half inch black home cell CNC machine to shape.
Oh. Oh, five, oh, point five.
Yeah, five would be good, right? Yeah.
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 Okay.
And the materials are, are the same material that's there now? Is it a?
I think it says a vinyl and acrylic. So.
White vinyl lettering, it looks like, and white acrylic. Uh, yeah. And you're primarily doing it just because you're changing your logo?
Correct.
Yeah. All right. And do you have any questions for the applicant?
No, no, I don't.
Not here?
I don't either. Mark, what do you think? Any questions?
On the sign?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's good. The coloring on, I guess, is that meant to be the moon or sun?
Just some, like a gradient.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Add a little color.
Any questions about that? Jenny?
Uh, I'm, I'm wondering whether the second sign with Aveda on it is, is a permissible sign. Steve didn't, Steve didn't mark whether or not the application does or does not meet the requirements of the sign ordinance. You know, there's a box on there, he didn't check it. And I, I don't have a copy of the sign law in my notebook, so I don't have any frame of reference for that. But it's a question I have.
So let me ask you a question. Um, this sign is yours. Did it, did Aveda pay you to put that little piece up there?
No, they don't pay us. You just have to get like approval from them, which we did to have it on our original sign. If I, if you need me to, I can always have them put it just right below on just one sign.
It's, my, my concern is a separate second sign. I have no cap, I have no problem being, being there.
Yeah.
But my question is, is it permissible? Do you have two signs?
So Steve's not here. Steve has to make this call. So if the board is inclined to approve, you can condition the approval and it being compliant with the sign code.
Or we could approve the primary sign with the condition that the secondary sign be?
Whichever way.
Yeah. We'll just have clarification. We'll have to have it. We could, we could make a motion with Steve approving that secondary sign.
Yeah, as soon as Steve says it's okay, it would go through. Is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah.
So she could put up the true sign tomorrow.
But no, you, I think you gotta come to Steve anyway for a.
Oh, because he has a permit.
Yes.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, okay.
And Steve is on vacation this week, correct?
Yep. Could we give the applicant the option of, if the second sign's not illegal to put that lettering on the, like, for example, on the first sign?
Yeah. Actually, on the sign or putting the plaque on top of the other sign?
It would probably just be on, right on it, yeah.
Right on there instead of, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's how it appears now.
Yeah.
That's a product.
Okay, so let's see how we're gonna do this.
So you gotta, you have a, you have a conditional motion
Right.
on the second sign. And the second sign is okay if it's.
If it's permissible by?
If it's permitted by the sign code. If it's not permitted by the sign code, then you would be permitted, if this is what you wanna do, you would be permitting the applicant to add that representation at the bottom of the first sign.
Add the title to the sign.
Yeah.
Okay, so if we have any other discussion, do you have any other questions for us at all? Um, I don't think so. Actually, I do. So I'm not sure if I wanna, so actually, this would be a separate question, has nothing to do with this, so I can worry about that later. All right. So take this.
Is this a historic preservation kind of question?
Yeah.
Why don't you do the motion?
And then, then you could, then you could ask it after we approve her.
Okay.
Sure, sure. Does anybody want to, to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to sound the one of the concerns of the second sign. At a meeting of the HPD on August 9, 2021, I made the motion to approve with conditions the application for a sign at Seven Chain Place. Uh, the app, the application is approved as submitted with the following condition. The second 26 inch by 6 inch sign with the text Aveda, A V E D A, on it needs, will, before being installed, must be.
Permitted by sign code?
Determined is, is permissible according to the sign laws.
You left that.
And even if it's not?
Oh, in the event that it's not, the applicant has, has the option to include the Aveda text on the sign in the lower section, similar to where it's located on the existing sign. Findings of fact for this, the primary sign meets, meets the requirements of our sign ordinance and is compatible with our design standards and our ordinance. And the sign does not
Negative.
Does not, does not present a negative impact to the historic resource.
Jenny, that would be true of the second sign as well, provided it's permitted on top.
Yes, and as Jeff said, it applies to the second sign as well, as long as it's permitted by our code. Thank you, Jeff.
I will second that.
Member Mauro?
Yes.
Member Harrington?
Yes.
Member Paula?
Yes.
Member Sur?
Yes.
And Chairperson Coe?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Okay. Did you wanna ask us something else?
Oh, so I have, um, on the left side of the door, there's like true salon, walk-ins welcome, and then it says entrance. Obviously, I want that to look similar, so that would probably be a whole new, like, or is it, is it show of this picture? It would be on the other side of the entrance door, so, which I don't think is pictured here.
Are you talking about changing out another sign?
Yeah.
Is it the exact, is it the exact same location and everything? It's just a new sign with a new logo?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you're gonna have to go through again?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you thinking about doing this soon?
Um, I guess I haven't made up my mind, but.
Because it was gonna be relatively soon and we keep the application open.
Okay.
For, to save you the next application.
I see. Okay.
But it would have to be done fairly soon.
Okay, how often do you guys do the meetings? Is it once a month? Oh, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, I can wait on it. Now, is it a problem if I take them down? Do I have, that's not a problem?
No.
Okay. All right, so maybe I'll just remove it and see how I like it and then.
Why don't we leave this open? So you don't have to pay another application.
Okay. But then she won't be able to go forth and make her sign?
Yeah, you've given her approval for those signs. You're just leaving a balance open that she can amend her application. She wants to change the signage on the other location.
So even though we went and made a formal motion and deleted, she can still leave it open?
You can leave it open for addition.
But the motion carries.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right. Thank you, Jeff.
All right, thank you.
All right. Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
So then would I just wait to hear back from you guys, or should I call?
So you should call Steve.
Okay.
Tell him you got your approval tonight, but you need some assurance
Okay.
that the second sign is pursuant to code and two, you want a building permit. It is, or the other one, whatever. You need, you need a building permit.
Uh-huh.
And then make, and I would suggest you make the decision on the other one in a month or so.
Okay. I can do that. All righty. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Start your permit process, you know, well before this meeting.
Okay.
It's already open.
It's already open. Yeah, it's open.
But, but the board would need to see a new signage
Right.
in the normal timeframe that stuff is thought to be filed in advance of the meeting.
Okay.
And I don't know what that is.
Okay.
The, the woman right behind you can tell you that.
Do you do it the next meeting or what?
Sure.
Um, I believe it is the 30th, but I'm.
Yeah, it sounds right.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be the first, wouldn't it be in September?
Well, let's talk about the deadlines.
Oh, no, sorry, sorry. Sorry. I didn't.
Yep, August 30th, and then the meeting would be September 30th.
Okay, sounds good. So I would call Steve to get the building permit?
And ask him about that second sign?
Okay.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay, can we have the applicant from Fifty State Street, Jorge, for a sign?
Hello.
Hello. So we have your application in front of us. I just wanna clarify that you are asking to have two signs put up, correct?
Definitely.
And both of the signs look exactly the same?
Yep.
And they're both the same size and everything?
Yes.
And then the one that you're putting here, is that to scale? Like, is that what it's, the space it's gonna take up?
Yep.
And are you slanting it? So you got slanted because the roof line's slanted?
Exactly, no, it's, um.
It's confusing, yeah.
Yeah, no, it's, it's gonna be just straight.
Straight across.
Yep.
And the height, is it just gonna fill that space evenly, or is it gonna be high or low, or is it gonna be directly in that space?
It would be right there in the space. Yep.
So so we see he has the same sign, it's gonna be on the side building and the front of the building.
Again, my, my question, again, is the question of two signs on the same, it's not on the same size. So I don't, I don't know how they'll.
Well, we'll, we'll do the same thing, as we did this time. We'll just have to see if Steve has, if there's a problem with code that says you can't have two signs on the same, well, that would be the signs on the same building, but we have two signs on the same building.
The signs are compliant with sign code.
Is there what?
The signs are compliant with sign code.
Oh, the sign, okay.
So that's what you want. Sign code.
Yes.
Okay.
It's the same, it's essentially the same motion as the rest.
Okay.
And what you're proposing to put, put in is going to be the same, just the same dimension.
Yeah, absolutely. But it's, it's a big sign. It's 82 by 38, so 82 is, is, uh, six.
Yep.
Six, eight by two.
This space, or you got.
It's a big sign. We don't have any dimension on this frontage, on the frontages either. Jeff, the sign, it's is, the, the size of the sign is based on a proportion of the linear footage of the elevations, is that correct?
I believe that's right. And there are dimensions.
Dimension is okay, but we don't have.
Oh, sorry.
You don't.
But again, it's not, this has not been checked as conforming to, to the ordinance, so it doesn't, it's not checked as, as variance required, but it also hasn't been signed.
So I can pull out my code and look at the sign code and tell you the answers.
Okay.
But that's not my job.
I know.
Yeah.
I understand.
So that's the building instructor shop?
That's the building.
Okay. So. Okay, so again, it'd be the same thing as with the last sign, it's gotta conform to the size proposed. Right, and Steve would know that.
It's basically replacing this one, which it just went down.
Well, yours is just a little fatter.
It's just a little bit taller, yeah.
So, so you're adding square footage to your sign, which you just have to make sure that in the ordinance doesn't, it's not too big for the space. But Steve will know that and will kinda do the same thing we did before.
If the space would be from, from here, here.
Right.
We don't have that dimension.
Right. Yeah.
Yeah.
And he's, he's saying that his space is the same space as that. I decided is this, is this one, like, it's a little bit higher.
Yeah, yeah.
It's 10 inches taller.
And it's taller than the one.
The one is there, yes.
Thirty-eight.
It's not, it's not gonna be blocked underneath that eve when you're looking at it, because right now, the way, the one that's there is not blocked. But if you go 10 inches higher, it's gonna be blocked under near that eve.
No, it is, the one that's there is actually, is in the center between the eve and the, the crossing bar.
Okay.
And then mine will be from the crossing bar 10 inches higher.
Okay. Ken, any questions? You'll hit when I ask you first. I'm gonna go this side. I always go this way.
I just think you should, I mean, I don't have an objection with the appearance of the sign.
And that's really what our charge is today, you know, because sizing, and even though, you know, we, our, our charge is to scale. If this is all about our, our code, or the sign code. So if it's, if it's appropriate for sign code, and we think it looks okay, then we're all right. The sign code will stop it when Steve looks into it, so, or if we're covering it.
When I looked at this, my thought, and I know you wanna use this design twice, my thought is, this material was copied here. If you had a, you know, a sign not quite as high, this copy was next to it, that would fit nicely in there. It's just an option, as I looked at it. You got more room this way.
Oh, change the sign so that it would be longer?
Yeah.
And then have weddings designed in the corner on the side?
Yeah, you just stack that right over here.
And then it would come all the way over to the edge?
Yeah, it would, I think it would better.
Yes.
It might, you know, that's a, that's an option anyway, I think.
Mean like a continuous sign around the corner?
It would just be longer and skinnier. No, no, not around the corner. It would just fill the space right here, to see how the space is. It was filled all the way to here.
Yeah.
It'd be skinnier.
It's a setback right there.
Right. That whole thing's a setback.
Yeah.
It's evenly setback.
Yeah.
And the other signs on the left side?
Yeah, ah, yeah, it's over here. So when people drive, when people drive, it's around the corner, when people drive out, they'll see it.
Mr. Crizolo? Yes. Do you occupy all, are you on the second floor? Do you occupy the full second floor? I do, yes. So he has that whole.
Yeah.
Content.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how it would look if the sign was longer, the sign on the front elevation was longer and thinner, because it will then extend over that piece of roof. That might.
Yeah.
That, that might visually.
Well, again, that's not our call, so if.
Well, yes, it is.
Well, no, I'm saying he's not proposing that, though. He's proposing this.
I recognize that, but, but Jeff made that suggestion, and I'm just responding to their suggestion that without seeing that.
Right.
Yeah.
It, it might be.
Well, I guess the question for you, Jorge, is, are you happy with what is there, or do you want to reevaluate and see if you wanna pull it over?
Actually, I know about the beauty and aesthetics, and that is what I'm happy about. So I believe that having the sign, the description of what my business does on this, on the side, that's not represent what I do.
All right, so he likes to end this. All right.
Okay.
Mark, any questions or anything?
No, I think it looks very nice.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jenny, anything else you wanna? All right.
If you'd like me to make the motion again?
Well, you just did the other one. And I'm reading, read back.
At a meeting of the HPD on August 9, 2021, I made a motion to approve with conditions the application for two signs at Fifty State Street, building F. The condition is that the code enforcement official verified that two signs, one on each of the, that's the, that's the south and east elevation, second floor of the building.
We also, something about making sure the sign is, one of the signs is level.
Oh, the side.
Yes.
Both, both signs will be installed from the right.
I second.
Okay, member Mauro?
Yes.
Member Harrington?
Yes.
Member Paula?
Yes.
Member Sur?
Yes.
And member Coe?
Yes.
And motion carries.
So you just have to give Steve a call, the building instructor, and just ask him about the second sign.
Okay.
And he'll, he'll get our information as well.
Okay.
All right.
And you'll give also a raise to the building.
Yeah.
Okay, great. So although, I have another, he suggested to put a second edition about the planter in the same application. So I presented a drawing of what I want to build, put a planter in the corner of the wall, and he said, yep. Would that be the ZVA, for site planning, or would that be us?
Good question. Yeah. Hold on.
See, we, when we talked about that, did he say it was us?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I submitted, this and here, so he said, just presented it at the same time, yeah.
This thing here?
Yeah, so we, this is.
Which one is this? On this.
That would be the corner.
Drawing here.
He wants to put a little, like, a wooden planter on the edge of that.
You gotta, did you talk to Steve about?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah. And that's why he suggested.
And what did Steve say?
To draw it, submit it, and then present it in here at the same time.
I particularly think it's gonna be a zoning issue, because it's a thoroughway, it's a pass-through. There's a driveway here, or a street.
Yep.
It's only a site planning issue, or it's only a ZVA, it's only a zoning issue, it requires a variance. And, and Steve has to decide whether or not it requires site.
I don't know.
And so you might, there might be another board you have to go to first, but you need to talk to him about that, or we, I could talk to him about that. But I'm, I'm not gonna speak for the board, but I would think that they would want to see a, a more complete.
I don't, I'm not sure I even have.
Right here.
Yes, this.
What we would need, if, if, if it does come to us, Jorge, is what we need is.
Little box there.
Yeah. No. We, we need to know what it is made out of, we need to know the dimensions of, we need to take a look, is it just a square box?
It's just a square, twelve by twelve. If it takes 12 inches into the driveway.
So that's where I think Steve's gonna have to.
Yeah.
That is why I put the dimensions, that is 15 feet between both buildings.
So.
Well, I'm not gonna prove anything, this is just shown as a, as a square with no dimensions on it.
So this board, no matter how small it is and whatever it is, if it's an architectural, it's a structure, then the board needs to see the size that the public can see. And they need to see it in relation to the building.
And know what it's gonna be doing.
So Jorge, the best thing for us, that's gonna really be helpful, is if you take a picture, just like this. You take a picture just like this, okay? And you literally draw to scale, exactly, in a black marker, where that box is gonna be, that's gonna really help us. You know, a big picture. And then draw it in there, exactly how it's gonna look. In the meantime, Steve is gonna need to.
And then some kind of sketch plan that really.
Right, if it's gonna be decorative at all, or if it's just gonna be a solid, just square box, we just need to know that.
Okay.
Jorge, are you asking, like, suppose you, you know, had it all drawn up, et cetera, and you brought it to this board for, like, appearance approval? Would the board look favorably on something like that? Is that your question?
I just wanted to beautify the corner entrance, so when my bill, my, my clients come into the, into my business, they would just feel an association to what I did.
That's what he's asking. He's asking, would we think it's, it's.
I think that's, Ken's makes good point.
Yeah.
He's actually doing all that work. Right, so the rough dimensions are?
It's 12 by 12, it's a box 12 by 12 with a.
It's tall.
So that's, right here, right, right on.
So here is the pillar.
Oh, here, draw it.
So the actual box is, it, hmm, how can I? You could put a, a very large flower pot without a pool.
Right. But he wanted, he wanted it attached.
Oh, no, I don't, actually, it doesn't have to be attached.
Oh, so you couldn't have it separate?
Yeah. If all, if all you want is something growing here.
Like this? You can, you want a flower pot just like this, you could put over here?
Uh, actually, mine is, is 36 in high.
That's. But is it connected to that pillar?
It is not connected to the pillar.
Oh.
No.
It's movable?
It's, yeah.
Oh, okay. So it's not ours.
You can put a flower, you can put a flower pot there, as far as I know.
Yeah. Steve would be the only one, yeah.
I know, that is the only reason why I brought it in here.
Yeah, so if it's movable, there's no, we have no jurisdiction over that.
Okay.
It's not a problem.
Right.
No, it isn't. No. It's, it's only gonna be an, an issue if somebody drags into it, and then who's gonna, who's gonna pay for the pot? Who's gonna pay for the damage to the pot?
Yeah.
You know, that's up to you guys.
Just talk to Steve about whether you can put a large pot in there, how big it could be.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Because it's not connected to the building, we don't.
No, it isn't.
Okay.
Okay, perfect. Now, would you change it out seasonally? You can put. That's correct. In the winter time.[1670.62]
Oh, he's done.
Oh, yes. Alright.
Alright, thank you.
Absolutely, thank you, Jorge.
Thanks. Okay, so we have our next applicant at five Monroe Ave for a sign window, or sign window. Sign window. Sign window.
Sign window.
Sign window.
Two.
Did we not?
We are at one window. At one time.
Is there someone here to represent us the application?
At five Monroe?
Yeah. Danielle, sorry.
Thank you.
Marina, do you, do you remember whether or not this window was part of the previous application?
Yes, it was. There wasn't. We're, we're, we're just trying to find out. I know that we had talked about this window in a previous application. Is that correct?
No, you guys approved the first window. It's exactly identical to the second one.
Right.
The first one, yeah.
Which is the one, if you're looking at the picture far to the left?
Yeah, the one's already in, that one's in. And we just want, um, the light is so important in there. Um, and it made a huge difference and we thought it would balance the building better. It'll won't look as much as the jail cell. And, um, so we wanted to add, uh, the other window to the other side, about eight feet.
So is the window identical to the one you put in?
Yes, yeah.
It doesn't look identical on this drawing?
Double hung sort of a two or two.
It looks, it looks longer in, in there.
Skinnier.
Yeah.
Is it the exact same size as the other one?
Yeah, twenty four by thirty six, exact same window.
Exact same window, okay.
It looks, it looks narrower, but you can see it's because, because of the angle of the photograph.
Yeah. Okay, as long as we know it's the exact same size.
Are you, are you speaking of the one by, um, the end of the building, the far right? If you're looking at it, that little white one?
Middle, the big long one.
Okay. Okay, okay. No, it's the exact same window.
Alright. Alright, so that's the window. And then is there a sign as well in this application?
Yes, next page. I have to tell you, I hope you make a goal of this. That building has been, that portion of that building has been a difficult
I'm looking.
To rent. To keep filled.
Yeah.
But it's.
So you're using this as an event space, right?
Yeah, like a pop-up shop, retail, um.
Oh, you.
Event trunk shows, yep.
Okay, alright, I'm just, cause I'm just, you know, this has got nothing to do with us, but I, if I were walking by there, I would not know what this is. It just says Pittsburgh.
So at.
Market?
Market.
Market.
Okay.
Very subtle, but it's there.
Alright, okay.
And this also includes the decal on the window.
Yeah, that's removable, that's a decal, drag on the lower window.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, yep.
Aren't window signs part of the sign ordinance?
Painted. I'll get decals if you just say.
I don't, I don't think it makes a difference whether.
Didn't we just have the first applicant, she wanted decals on her window, so.
I shouldn't.
Isn't that what she said? She said she wanted.
No.
I don't think it matters whether it's painted or whether it's from.
No, this is applied.
It's the same.
Yeah. And also putting in stone, uh, block, cinder block on the wall where the air conditioner was or something.
That's already done, yeah. That was just, I, when I took a picture of the building, I just wanted you guys to know that that was just, there was an old, um, ugly air conditioning sticking out of there, so they re, um, blocked it and it's all painted white now. Now, now it's all done.
Okay.
Got it, yeah.
Okay. Alright, Ken, do you have any questions to the applicant?
Uh, no, I don't. Just, what's the store gonna be again?
It's gonna be like, uh, maybe for the retail, she might do pop-up trunk shows there, pop-up stores, maybe an event space. Yeah.
Nope, no.
I don't have anything. Mark?
No.
Jenny? Oh, okay. Alright, so does anybody wanna make a motion or do you want me to do it?
The building inspector is signed this one.
He's what?
Building inspector.
Code enforcement is signing this one.
Okay.
Alright.
You have a question?
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'll make a motion. At a meeting of the HPB on August ninth, two thousand and twenty one, the following motion was made. I make a motion to the HPB approve or submitted an application for a window and a sign made by, who's our person here? Which, what's your first name?
Oh, Danielle Flass, sorry, I didn't know. Yeah, Danielle Flass, yep.
For the property at five Monroe Avenue. Um, do I have a second?
Also.
Okay, uh, member Mauro?
Yes.
Member Harrington?
Yes.
Member Paula?
Yeah.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
And your person co?
Yes. Okay, great. Good luck.
Great. Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
Have a good night, thanks.
This represents our, let's get a point here. This. When this building was still a liquor store in
I'm sorry.
nineteen eighty, that's the last place I was actually asked to, that I knew.
I think it's that.
It wasn't my business, but I was thirty.
Pardon me? No, I, I think it's.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. You drove by yourself?
Yes.
You drove yourself?
Yes.
Okay, and you're allowed to drive down?
Pardon?
You're allowed to leave and drive? You feel like you're alright to do that?
Yeah.
Cause if you wanna go in there and just sit for a while, it's up to you.
It's, it's, that can work.
But I mean, before you leave, if you wanna sit just, and then make sure you're alright to drive, it's up to you.
Oh, no, I'm not gonna be driving. I was gonna walk.
And walk, you're alright to walk home?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's. You can lie down on the floor and it could give you a right.
Yeah.
I don't think you can make it.
Well, that's kind.
Well, it's better than falling down the street.
Yes.
Or do you have anybody, do you have anybody that you can call that come and, come and get you?
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Do you have a phone with you? Or you need one? Okay. You can leave it here. No worries, just leave it.
Well, I like to keep.
Okay.
Yeah.
Might feel better.
Oh, yeah, feel better, thank you.
Thanks, man. Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, alright. If something, you know, if you don't feel good, just come back and sit in another room until you feel better or we'll.
We'll understand.
Okay. Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you.
Careful of the wires.
Okay, um, so our next applicant at forty seven State Street, Kirby. So we have a quorum, so okay? Thank you.
Uh-oh.
Hi.
This individual is my brother-in-law and I don't think it's gonna be, be a. I.
I don't.
We don't change, money doesn't change hands. Jeff, we have to say whether.
What we talk about, no.
Okay. So are you the owner of this property?
No, it's, I'm here, Michael Newcomb can't be here too.
Okay, so you are.
I'm Greg Searle.
Are you, do you do the work for him or are you?
I do work for him, yeah.
Are you gonna be the one doing this roof?
Uh, no.
No, okay, so you're just here as his representation and you know about a project?
Yes.
Okay.
You're a property manager.
Kinda, yeah.
Of this, of this building?
I, I work on all this building.
Okay, so tell us, the reasoning he wants to change this roof line is because he's having issues with leakage or?
I don't know, isn't it? It looks like it could be.
Yeah, it's a valley, yeah. Um, when they built it, I've done the work for thirty years. And it's always been the maintenance issue. So in the spring, uh, they had a tree fall on the front of the house. They have to put a new roof on and he just thought this might be a good time to correct a real bad problem.
So this is the original roof line? Since the house is built? Or did they add on this little section?
I think, I think this part was.
I think there, there have been additions.
Yeah, for sure it was.
That's the issue.
And that might have been the reason, right, that might have been the reason why there's trouble now, because that addition.
Yeah, and then it's a continual, I mean, it's all the time.
Yeah, because that, the way whoever put that addition on didn't evaluate engineeringally how that roof is gonna.
All, all the water off of the inside slope of the roof is running.
Right, so now.
It's padding upwards of debris.
Oh, yeah.
And that's, so what we're doing is we're, we're correcting a roof line from an addition that wasn't correctly done.
Right, yeah.
Um, Ken, I know that we had talked earlier about this project and you had some suggestions. Do you?
Yeah, there was a house on Locust Street, which was probably like, if you drove down the south, it was maybe two from the end.
Yep.
And they had a roof that went like this and, you know, it had problems for years, so they put like a copper roof and, you know, going up so, not to the peak, but so high on the roof and in the valley and it was all sealed. And, uh, you know, it stopped from leaks. And, uh, I'm thinking if you did that here, you know, it might be, uh, less expensive and look better than it does.
I don't know about the cost part of it, but, um, I can tell you that on the, on this part of the roof in the valley, they tried to wrap it up with rubber.
Oh, membrane.
Continual, you know, it doesn't make any difference. I, I don't know if you ever loved the copper. I seen the one, the one in South, on, on Locust itself. So I, I can answer that, I don't.
Well, the place I got the idea from was once I went to this like landmark society presentation on roofs and there was some big church on East Avenue where they had a problem of all these roofs coming together, big roofs and, you know, valleys and they came down into this one place and who knows what came down, ice or whatever. So they ended up making like a copper containment there and then the water, you know, went off and it solved the problem. So when, uh, you know, there was a fellow there who was, uh, I can't think of his name, he was a member of the church there on the corner and they worked together to solve the roof, I mean, he had many leaks.
What, what church is this on East Avenue?
The one that they did, I'm not sure. Yeah, I'm not sure. It was downtown.
Saint Paul's.
Saint Paul's.
Third, third Presbyterian. Yes, for.
No, it wasn't that far down. It was like kind of mid-eastern, mid-upern eastern.
Uh, east or, east or west of Culver, west of Culver?
Probably west, yeah.
Yeah, very.
Cause we, my former business has worked on all those churches. You're, you're talking about a great solution. It's exceedingly expensive. Greg, is this the rear elevation of the house? It says it's, it's showing the south elevation.
Yeah.
And if this, if the front of the house is, if this is on State Street, it must be the rear.
This is the rear, this is about the avenue side. This will be the back of the house.
So this is whatever, yeah. Uh, the only point I'm getting at is that this is not a highly visible elevation.
Oh, yes, it is, cause you're walking down the street, oh, yeah, I walk down this every day.
Well, that's right. You should walk up, down, you'll see it, cause it's at the corner a lot.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah, see, this is the street right here?
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if doing copper on the small part of this roof is less expensive than.
Doing the whole thing, roofline change.
Changing the whole roof.
Uh, I, I have looked at the, there's a plan view here, several sheets here.
Yeah, right.
Or maybe not even copper.
That's what I'm saying, it hits up.
If it has EPDM on it now.
No, I mean some metal.
Well, the only, the only metal you can put on a roof is, uh, you can't get turn metal anymore, which is the really his old historic metal.
So they're gonna take this.
Or copper, either bright copper or zinc coated copper. There are no, there are no other metals unless you.
I like, I like.
That you see all over.
Right, it's gonna stay for sale in this picture.
You mean one of these.
Yeah.
It's gonna be just.
Yeah.
No, no, not, I'm not talking about metal singles. No, I mean, double singles are, are less reliable than, than I asked.
No, no.
Yeah.
Right like this.
Oh, got it, got it.
Okay.
But I'm not sure how.
We're still gonna have the porch.
So the porch is gonna be.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
They're gonna, we're gonna fix it if it needs to be fixed.
But it does look like that roof is sagging, I don't think it's really.
Yeah, it's hanging, it's got a quite a pitch to the side.
Alright, I'm gonna, this is a great elevation drawing, so I can see it.
Yeah, I wonder how, how it will snow, probably.
What, with that pitch?
The problem right there.
Yeah.
Right there. You see, this is visible inside.
So we're losing a peek on that little addition is what we're losing there. So one of my concerns is, so obviously this was an addition put on at later date. So when additions are put on, although it looks very much in keeping with the original house, it's always important to delineate the fact that it was an add-on. When we switch this roof, it's gonna change that delineation to make it look like it's part of the original house because that roof just takes it right through. So, yeah, that's one of my concerns. I mean, I'm not so upset about it, but it's gonna take away that little piece that everyone knows, oh, yeah, it was added on. And then you've got this, it connects the whole thing. So is anybody else concerned about that, Jenny?
I think it's gonna reduce addition.
Even with the roof change?
Oh, yeah.
Anybody else ever been concerned about that?
It just looks like a winged door here. And I'm just thinking if you went up higher to mimic this roof, you're really gonna be into this socket area. That's inappropriate.
You know, a window up.
And they got a window. He doesn't see the windows there.
It'll be a bedroom.
So they, they got a, yeah.
It's a bedroom window that requires, uh, specific.
Egress, absolutely.
Okay. Greg, I'm not understanding this.
Will this change the inside at all? Here, yes.
No, it'll just change like you're saying in the kitchen. Everything will remain the same inside, you know, ceilings and everything. Um, if you look, there's a main beam that goes, that's why it's an addition. It goes right here at the
And it's just sealed.
Right off the door, yeah.
Sealed sidewall.
Um, but you're not gonna see any change in the inside at all. That's a pretty big kitchen that's right here, so it'll remain the same.
Alright, Jenny, are you, do you have other questions that you wanna?
No, I was, I, I was missing the dashed lines. There was a ceiling number here. I was trying to trying to be sure I understood the roof plan and the elevation together.
So I guess my question for you is, do you want to talk with the owner and see if a copper idea would be something he'd even wanna address or look into? Or do you want to just go with this plan and vote on this?
I think we have to go with this plan because of, and I can tell you over thirty years what a, you know, problem it's been. And I'm sure, I'm sure he's researched everything. I mean, it hooks everything. Um, I think this was what he thought would be the best solution.
Alright, so we're gonna take this.
I also think that changing material is not going to fundamentally change the problem with two valleys coming together with no good exit point. So everything collects there, nuts, leaves, twigs, water.
Plus you have this wall of the main house right up there like that, so you gotta double wean it.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it will, the damages, the existing condition is not, is not only uh, problematic because it collects debris and and means that water collects there, cause it can't drain off.
Yeah.
But that, all that wet debris is damaging to the siding.
But I, I just wanted to make sure that he didn't want to, to bring that back to the owner, you think, okay.
No, I think.
And that you wanna present, you wanted to vote on exactly what's presented here.
Yes.
Questions? Is the roof slanted toward away from State Street?
Slanted towards, yes, it's not towards State.
Yeah, it's planted away from State, cause it's on the other side of State Street. Oh, oh, wait, that way. Um, it's, well. Um, it's, well.
Yeah, it's slated away from State.
No, the valley slanted away from State Street.
Valley is slanted towards the roof.
Yes.
Well, it, it runs.
Yes, towards the rear of the house.
To State Street. It runs, currently, the valley runs parallel to State Street.
No, it doesn't. Yeah.
So, I mean, it would drain.
Only, the only way you could improve the drainage in that area would be to put what's called a saddle, build a structure and force the water to go the opposite direction. And that, in my mind, is more intrusive visually than what's being proposed. Do you understand what I mean? Like, put a dam.
Yeah.
Put a dam at one end and force the water by adding overlay roofing.
No, but I mean, I, I think the roof already slants in the direction the water.
In the valley.
Not the roof, the valley, sorry.
I'm, I'm talking about the valley. The valley won't have any slant to it at all. Now.
The valley doesn't have any. That's why everything collects right there.
Valleys like parallel over the earth.
Yeah.
I mean theoretically.
Yes, because it's not a valley where two sloping roofs are coming in at different angles. Like where you have two, two heavily gabled roofs, steep gables, and so you have a long running valley. It's, it's not really a valley. It's just where two roofs come together. And you, one could put a saddle in there to direct water to flow. You want it to flow out towards the south side, which would then be dropping water.
On that roof.
On the small roof, yeah.
Which I think is one reason why, what's, you know, why we have trouble with that, too. It's just on a day, you can really conceal it.
You mean the roof over the door?
Over the porch, yeah, but over the.
The back door.
If you go down and look at it, it's got a real.
When I looked at.
You can see the sag in the roof.
Yeah.
From the back of.
At the porch.
You know, it looked like the, the roof over the porch was like in the same plane. In other words, if this were the, if this were the house roof and this was the other roof coming in like this, that these, the porch roof and the roof that was closer to the balcony were, you know, right next to each other. And that this valley, uh, extended, I don't know if it ran or not, on this porch roof and then onto a gutter which attached to the back of the house.
Right. It's attached to the porch.
Ken, can you read this?
That's what I was like.
This plan view?
Have I read it?
No, no. Do you understand this plan view, what it's showing me?
Yeah, they, they are proposing, I think, to, uh, uh, lower the, the roof of the section that's on the west side of the house and put it up. They're gonna take it from here, pardon me. They're gonna take it from here and go under this and over this part of the roof up against the house. And my concern is that that's too flat for the, for the house.
I don't, I don't disagree. But the, the roof slope they're proposing, I'm sure there are geometric, um, restraints based on the window, the required egress window in the existing bedroom and the eve of that existing, uh, west.
Of the main.
No, not the main roof, the, the addition, the little addition roof. It's only two on twelve, which is a very low slope, and they're gonna put shingles on, but they're also gonna put ice and water shield on the full roof area rather than just the, uh, two feet inside the inside wall that's required by building code.
Well, I, so let's, I looked up the, um, would you consider this house an Italianate style? Because that's what our design guides would call it according to when it was built.
No, no, no. It's not just when, when it was.
Well, I know, but I'm looking at also the other homes. They use examples. Looks very similar to. It didn't say on the blue sheet. We couldn't find on the blue sheet what it's, what they called it. Sometimes the blue sheet doesn't.
I know, but it's not Italianate in any way.
Well, let's take a look at the other representations that they put in the, um, design guide. See, there's houses that look very similar to. And they're.
The windows, the, the windows are different. These have, uh, more elaborations on it. I wouldn't, I would not call this.
Well, it's in, in this design guidelines, according to here, and then similarities, I think, of style here. It talks about roof having moderate pitch. So specifics here say roof, moderate pitch, broad, overhanging eaves, often embellished with brackets. So moderate pitch was specifically stated in this, which not much is stated in here, but that is.
I'm sorry, I agree, but the only Italianate features that are exhibited are on the elevation.
So, but what I'm saying is that there's a documentation stating moderate pitch, so I'm just thinking that that's definitely not a moderate pitched roof that we're talking about, so that's another concern.
The practical dilemma is they can't put a steeper roof on there. Another solution would have to be devised that does not include this long roof replacement.
How about like, uh, what do they call those drains that are inside the house?
Leaks. No, you wouldn't want, you would not want an interior leader on a roof like this because it collects so much debris.
Because it's not draining.
Because it's not draining. The reasons, the reason why downspouts leak is that debris collects in the, in the da, in the gutters, gets flushed down through the downspout in the rain, stays there all winter long. Water builds up, turns to ice, and then the, uh, downspout splits, and you don't want that happening inside your house.
You know, every time my roof guy visits my house, which he also does other work, okay, he did the whole roof, I get a lecture on keeping the gutters and everything on the roof clean twice a year.
Yeah.
You can, I can count on it. So I, I think that, you know, that it's important to do that. I think one problem with the house may be that when they added that on.
Right.
They didn't do it right.
And that's exactly right. So that's what, that's what I'm saying. What we're trying to do now is fix the addition that wasn't engineered correctly for drainage.
You know, would it be possible just to put a little, you know, like to, uh, put a slope and inside that valley towards the back?
Yes.
You know, that might be a cost effective way to go.
Now, let me just draw something here, which is approximately what you're talking about. So this is. So if, if this remained the same, the way to get the water out of here, well, it could go either way. Well, yes, but what that means is that, looking at it from State Street, you're gonna see, this is gonna come like this, and you're gonna see this.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Will you see that?
No.
Well, yeah, you would. Because it has to be higher. It has to be higher.
Yep.
Wait.
It would be.
See, I think it's kind of hidden by.
It would be, it would be here. You'd see this.
Yeah.
Set back a little bit.
But you're gonna see that, you're gonna see the slant roof as well, aren't you, from that?
No, you wouldn't see.
You wouldn't see it from that view? You're not gonna see that slant roof come down? The one that he's proposing?
Yeah.
Yeah, you'd see it. Right. So it's, it's both of them you'll see. So I guess the question is, what, what do you wanna say?
This looks a little bit better to me.
The, what, the roofs or the, the little valley?
But I mean, how, how high do you think this needs to go?
It has to go high enough that you get a good enough slope to run it. And this is, this is gonna be a ridge. This is a ridge that comes here, so this is gonna be high. So it's, no, we're gonna turn it into a ridge. That's the point. You need to turn this into a ridge so that the water goes down and this becomes the valley. This becomes the wall. I, I think this is more complex than you're thinking.
Here's what I was thinking. You take something like, you know, here's your roof. You know. Okay, something like this. Okay, and then you take this, and, and here's this existing valley, okay? Then you take this like this, and you take this like this. And this is like a, this is a plane here. You know what I mean? It's not like a ridge. This, this becomes elevated above this valley from here to here, say, but not all the way up to the top. And water drains down this to that.
Well, this isn't, this isn't all the way up to the top either, but if this inside corner here, you have to be sure you're clearing water away from this wall as well as away from this wall.
All right, well, you know what?
We can't.
Right. What, what I think we need to do is we need to say, or we need to vote on whether we think this is appropriate roof pitch for this house. And if we vote against it, then, um, the applicant's gonna have to reevaluate if there's another way of getting that water out. So I think that's where we are right now. So that's the question. The, the proposed design is what he's proposing. So we need to vote on whether we think that that's appropriate or not. And if it does not pass, then he'll have to go back to his person and see if there's, they've got other ideas.
Can I say one thing about what I correct, maybe a misimpression I gave? When I said it was a flat valley, I mean, you're raising the pitch down here or the valley down here to a, a plane like that, which intersects the roof, but not all the way up at the top, like just high enough to make it drain in the back.
Right, but it does, you don't want it to be, you don't want it to be a plane. It needs to have some sort of a funnel shape to it for it to be functional.
Okay, so does somebody wanna make a motion on this particular application as this? Me, I guess. All right, here we go. I guess I will. Let me get my paper here. Oh, there it is. I thought I gave it to somebody. Okay. So at a meeting, at a meeting at the H P B on August ninth, twenty one, a following motion was made. I make a motion that the H P B denied the application for the roof made by Mr. Newcom. Person, representative at forty seven State Street. So I have a second.
Second.
Okay, number four.
Okay, I'm voting to deny.
So you're voting with my motion?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, member Paul.
I deny as well.
Okay, number Sarah.
I'm gonna stand.
Okay, answer first of all. I deny. Okay, motion carries. So I think the motto of this year was, I think that, that we would like to see some other research done on a way to, to re-pitch that.
Yeah, okay. What is the board working for, kind of, so that he has?
So we don't like the, that big long, well, we don't, we don't, right, we feel that the roof line is not, it's not pitched.
He talked to your building inspector about this, too.
Right. So it's more for us, it's the architectural visualization of the way that roof line is gonna be pitched. That's, that's what we voted against. Not so much the, the functionality of that. It's more about, we don't think it goes with the character and the architectural style of that home. So that's what we voted on.
It's, it's something, something less, uh, intrusive.
Yes.
Something that's not so much of a change, so I think we're.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, so as far as what we could do or what the applicant can do or the owner, is Jenny had a couple suggestions about, you know, what we were drawn and, and maybe materials wise, maybe the copper would be another suggestion, but I think there's some room to do research there to see if there's other ways that we can drain that roof other than.
Could Mr. Newcom be in touch with Jenny to see what, to flesh out what she was talking about?
Yeah, but I, I think it would be more productive to speak to Mr. Finley, who's the designer on this project.
All right, so, so Mr. Finley can contact you, Jenny, about some ideas.
Yeah, I've dragged most of it. This is, um, this is a hand drawing, so it would be more difficult, I think, but he, he probably uses AutoCAD, which I think would be a, an opportunity to make it, I think, just so the board knows. I think you're always to, what happens is, you're gonna see something here.
Yeah.
Yeah, regardless of what it is. And in my opinion, it may be more, what we end up with may be more objectionable than this.
Well, we haven't, we haven't ended up with anything yet. So let's see what they come back at.
All I said was, it may end up being more objectionable to what's being presented here. So I think the board needs to be prepared today.
Okay, okay. So is it okay if they contact you, Jenny, for a portion? Okay. All right, thank you for your.
No, I'm not.
I couldn't hear you.
Okay.
Greg, Sarah?
Yeah.
Nice to meet you. Nice to see you, too. See you later.
Thank you. So we have applicant for fifty seven South Main Street for tradition. Okay, there.
All right.
Good. And you are?
Guy Tunnel Abate, Representative Roger Wall.
So you're the contractor.
And you did the White House?
Yes.
Thirty-six Monroe, fifty-seven South Main Street, sixty-one West Jefferson, Joe Joe's.
Yeah.
Bill's Bakery, a few things.
Well, thank you for being here.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so the discussion tonight is the bore, the porch addition. Were you here when we originally, when it was originally presented?
Paul Morbeto did.
Okay.
Paul could make it this evening.
Okay, so you do understand why you're back for that same, or you don't? Okay.
No.
So what had happened when Paul Morbeto was here? We had talked about the fact that that porch is significant to the home, and we did not want it to be disrupted. And we said, well, maybe an idea could be that instead of the screens, you use glass. And that's all that happened. There was no official drawing, so there was no approval on that.
So it was understood, and even with Steve, I certainly wouldn't do it, that if it looked, and Paul came to me and said, if you do it exactly, like you could not tell that it was a porch, then you're fine. So I went ahead and did it, and you could not tell.
They have, they have built inside the porch as you suggested.
Yes.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at the representation of the piers here, and I recognize that this is an AutoCAD drawing, so your hatches are limited to what you have. Are you using the same piers?
Everything's identical.
Not, not is it identical? Are they, is, are they what was there?
Yes.
They were there.
Yes.
Yeah.
So I believe, Lisa, that these, uh, the side elevation, I don't think they've done anything. I think all the instead of screens, you have glass.
Correct.
On, on the left side. Instead of screens, it's glass.
So this is a picture of it today.
Yeah.
That's the one side. Do you have a picture of the other side? I think, I think I do.
Don't.
I do. So the other side is a little different because you have a central window that's larger than the original, correct?
No, look, he's got an, he's got an existing. He's got an existing. This is, this remains the same. Nothing is different here. Except he's made, there's a there's a stu, there's a style. Encasement windows have been added at the left and right side of that large opening.
All right, so I have.
That's what you're proposing?
Yes.
So this is now what it looks like. So we've, on that window, we've got a double, whatever that is.
It's a casement window.
Okay, and that one we know. Okay, and then center is a.
The center's the same. This is, these two are the same.
Right, but that's different?
Yes.
Okay, so that one's.
If you not put in the casement on the right, on the right hand side here.
The, the two exteriors are, I'm sorry, two sides are operable windows. The center's a stationary window.
I know, but, well, that's what you're showing here, but that's not what it looks like here. How does this, how does this window operate?
The casement.
Then why is it, if it's the same size, why is it double?
Because you can't get a casement that width. It was the only option.
So the width's changed?
Well, there's.
So it's existing, where those openings are what they are. So the left opening, we saw, is too wide for a single casement, so it has to be a double.
But these aren't the same size? These openings aren't the same size? They were never originally the same size?
They look very close to the same size.
Why would they not make it the same size?
Yeah, they never did. It's not.
Okay, I'm.
You are.
I, I, I'm not okay with the casement there.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't understand how it could be so different.
See what you mean.
The two sides, why would you make it so different?
Compared to this.
Right, so that, that's my concern, and I guess we'd have to see the original. Wait, let's see it right here. So to me, these look like they're the same size. So, or did we, did we, did we widen that center window?
No.
I mean, I don't know how you could.
That's, no, so what you're looking at is screens.
Right.
But the screens don't come into play here. The screens are already inside from ceiling to floor. They were made, who knows when? So what you need to look at, Lisa, is the lattice.
Right, so those lattices weren't moved.
No, they're in place.
So was there an addition put on here? Did you, did you take that side over?
It's exactly like it, it was. I just filled it in with a casement window instead of a piece of glass. The other ones, we made glass. I should have made them op. I should have made them operable, but it was.
If, if this is, is even. Is this before?
No, that's before, yes.
Okay, if this is. This can be, you know, if it, if it's two inches bigger. It's not gonna fit a standard casement. They, they may have been able to.
If this is two inches bigger?
Yes.
That's why you gotta split it.
Or get it, or else get a custom case.
You can't get a custom casement that size. I would have, I would have definitely have done that.
That surprises me, but okay.
Is it that much bigger than the other one? Do you know?
Well, actually, to me, the, it doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter?
The dimensions don't matter. It's, I don't.
You don't like that side?
No, it's not that I don't like it.
It doesn't sound.
Compatible. It's not in keeping with and it's not compatible. Like and dislike is not.
So technically then, what we're saying is that although you stated that you replaced The screens with windows and it's all you did, that one section you didn't, you changed because of the size.
Because I couldn't get the window correct. I left the original post and lattice detail and that window, so I could take it out, put a piece of glass if that behooves you.
What's the differential on the widths in each one of those?
Not sure.
Couple of inches.
It's a couple of inches, but it's big enough case, they don't make a casement that wide. It's just unstable. You think about it, it's a piece of glass. The jams or the sash would have to be so wide for it to be stable. So take the window out and put a piece of glass in.
Plus, if you open, if you open casement windows, wood, wood casement windows, particularly larger ones are Are always a problem because of the weight of the window. When they're open, the, the outside end Drops, it sags.
So that would cause you to have to put a stable window in there and that couldn't be open? And the center is a fixed glass, correct? And then that side can open?
Just one side, yeah.
And then how about the sides over here?
All fixed.
Those, those are all fixed.
I did that because I was trying to stay within those tolerances and you could not tell. Had I known this now, I would have made those operable and I would have left the back glass, but that's, that ship has sailed.
No, he's just saying.
But I don't think we ever gave approval.
No, that's, that's what we're trying to say.
We, you, you never received approval for any work on the exterior itself.
Sorry, but I was under that oppression. I said, if we don't change the porch, the exact look of the porch. So what you, what you're describing is me dividing that one light, which again, the screen should not come into play. I left that window, and of course, that's the very rear of the house, but nonetheless, so neither here nor there.
I think Jenny's point was that we understand that you were given a message.
I was given permission.
Right, but.
But, but now. Permission did not come from the board. These windows, this, this area where you have the six doors and one operable door, does that Enter it into this room? Is this all one space, one room space?
No, I don't remember. Is that what it looks like now? No, that doesn't look like that. That's not the same. That's not it.
The existing is right here, Lisa. Here's, here's the original.
That's what it looks like.
Right, this, this is what it looks like now.
Um, those are supposed to be windows? Okay, it's one door.
One door.
So that's the, the side, okay.
Yes, that's what's there now. This is the back of the house and it's, I have no, personally, I have no objection to having all this glass here. My question is.
There's not all that glass.
There's no glass there. It's just one, one door. So, so what you're looking at is a proposed.
I know, I'm asking about these sides. This says fixed wood door.
You don't.
What are you proposing here? Are you proposing a fixed wood door here?
These are plans that Paul Morbeto submitted months ago after.
No, we never saw, we never saw anything.
Oh, I've never seen these plans and I'm the doctor.
I'm not, I don't know.
So I build up just, just up here, but nonetheless, these are plans that you declined.
Correct.
So, and then what was told to me by Steve and Paul, if you build a room inside this room and it still looks like a porch on the exterior, No permission is needed. And what you think I did?
So I'm asking a question. This is new. This, this.
That's not right.
Those are bedrooms.
They never did that. They never did this. They never did that.
What's up? Then why are we looking at this? If this is not what's being proposed?
We're looking at the porch.
But this has changed as well. If we're looking at this, if this is not what's there and if this is not what they want to do, why are we looking at it?
Well, they, I think he brought it because he wanted to show, they wanted to show us what the, just the porch, not that part.
So what is going, what is going on?
It's just a door. It's just a.
And is this what was there originally?
Yes, one door.
And.
That's the original door, right?
No, it's not the original door, it's the original space. And on either side of that door is just solid stucco, just the way it was originally. So that's not, that's not right.
So this is, this does not apply.
Correct.
Okay, the reason why I was asking.
And even though stairs aren't, aren't like that, the stairs are, are thin, they're not, they don't go all the way across.
The reason why I'm asking is because This is a very shaded lot, but that does not mean that they won't want any ventilation. All the windows on the, the, the windows on the, on the On the other side, the left side. These are all fixed glass, is that right? Okay. So you go over to here and.
That's the only one that opens. If we, if we have to take that out.
So this one is a single casement. So what I was getting at is with this, I'm looking at this. I, I don't know why we're looking at drawings for stuff that doesn't exist.
Why are you?
That's because that's what was presented to us.
Can I, can I summarize? I think.
All I'm getting, just let me finish. All I'm getting at is that I can understand wanting additional ventilation in this space. If these, if this were constructed like this, you could put in An extra door, you could make one of these doors operational, so you had more airflow in the room. But if that's, if this doesn't exist, if this is not what's there.
It's not what there, because that was never approved. Now, if it was approved, I would have labeled it.
See, this is what it looks like. This is the original. See, there's no space for that. I don't know where that came from.
Drawings were provided to me. I'm looking at them, assuming that this is what's being presented here. So why, why do we have this?
I think as a temporary summary, I think what you're saying is If the applicant would like an approval and needs to update his drawings to, to.
So this was tabled by you. So you're still looking at the original drawing. Obviously, we went ahead and did what you supposedly approved by two people.
Tabled and approved.
This was declined. Right, it was, so you tabled it in, in lieu, in lieu of us coming up with a better situation. But what was spoken about is that if you build this exactly like it is and not touch the exterior, then And so that's why I did it. Certainly didn't do it because I didn't have anything to do.
Yeah, no, 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 I get it, I get it. So there was a miscommunication between what was told you, what was expected of us, and what happened. So I think right now, what it looks like is The significant, the, the problem we see is that everything else looks exactly except, the same, except for that one window. So would you feel comfortable or would your, the owner feel comfortable to have a, have a Standalone or have a glass and take that window out?
You know, it's an old house, right? So there's really not much ventilation on any of the windows because they're so, you know, bad. And we're certainly trying to repair and restore as many of them as possible. They've spent an enormous amount of money. They feel frustrated for the whole process. They were actually glad and then we can talk about the paint situation after that. So they're frustrated completely. Yes, so do I need to resubmit what was done to it? Because I certainly can do that and then you could approve or disapprove. Now, the situation is, is that the screens are not permanent. Those screens were just there. So what you've looked at, what are you shaking your head for?
Well, the, the screens don't matter to me because whether it's screen or glass, it appears as black.
But they're removable. They're not permanent.
They're going out, right?
They're, they're gone. They were just, they were just there, but the porch, original porch didn't have screens. It just had these little makeshifts that somebody did, dilapidated, as you've been saying. So what I think is a porch, you know, I divided those because They were kind of there and I couldn't put a big window in it, so it was divided. So, but the opposite side, you know, the east side, west side. It, you know, it was too big for a casement and so that's what just kind of fell into place.
Let me, from, from our perspective, okay, this, let me kind of, because I think we're seeing two different things. So we would have rather had you kept it approach, but that's not what the owner wanted. He wanted it enclosed. So the porch was meant to be a porch. It was never supposed to be glassed in. You guys glassed it in. So, see what I mean? Like, we didn't say, oh, you have glassed it in because that was never the intention of that house. It was supposed to be a porch. So look, so by glass, it's not, you know, we didn't say glass it in. We're just like, if you, if you have to do it. So you know what I mean? So that's what we're coming from.
So it also came into play.
Suggestion on how it could be handled.
So the south side of this house is what is visible. Now, it comes to interpretation. The public drive, which is a private drive, is now being deemed public access. So therefore, you could see the rear of the house. So they're frustrated beyond belief. So what, what is it? Is it that private drive is public access and therefore the back of the house has to be, you know, restored?
The ordinance has not changed at all.
Yeah, it's always said, it's always said public way. Otherwise, you couldn't say anything.
We didn't change this ordinance midstream. This ordinance was the ordinance when the original application came in. And that ordinance reads that this board has jurisdiction of any architectural feature That can be seen from a public way or a place that the public regularly goes. So that would include that drive.
Correct, now.
So that didn't change.
Okay, now, today, walk down that private drive and look in the yard. You can't see anything. So is it summer and fall? Or is it winter and spring?
Foliage does not. Those trees can die and be knocked down or cut down.
Okay, and, and again, and, and with all due respect, I'm not here to argue with anybody. We certainly, you know, I, I work in a small business. I want to do the right thing, but it, you know, it's, it's like this back and forth and Your interpretation is, is really frustrating, but nonetheless, I'm here to do the right thing.
I, I, I get what you're saying and I can see how you would be frustrated. However, The interpretation that we have made of this code has been there.
No, I understand that. I'm not, I'm not gonna argue.
The fact that this board was assuming jurisdiction of the porch Was clear from the very get-go on this project. So there wasn't any We, the board said one thing and changed its mind. The board has always taken a position That it had jurisdiction of this porch. So if any frustration, and I understand that your owners are frustrated. But any frustration that they have came from them getting a message from someone other than this board. And so this board, because Just because your owners got a message from someone other than them, they still have to do their job.
Completely understand. So here's how it happened.
Mr. Morbeto never came back to discuss any of this with us.
Nope, because so. We came, we, we, we had an application to redo this porch, is what you're looking at now, original. That was declined, and so the whole project was tabled. The discussion was had between someone here, we can certainly look back at the tapes, and Paul Morbeto. As Steve Loth and Paul both told me, hey, they declined it, but if you don't do anything To this side of the house because the private drive never came into play, the rear of the house, I could do whatever I, I liked. I certainly didn't do that. I tried to do it all with the exception of that window. And so because you could see the porch south side from Main Street, that comes into play. Now, Monroe Avenue is a different story because it's the rear. I can use fiberglass, I can use vinyl, I can do whatever I want. Certainly didn't. But is that not? If that's the case, then it was deemed that you can't see the rear of the house from, from Main Street. And then, when the mayor and I met, he says, well, no, Steve, you're wrong because this is public access. And so if you walk down that side street, then you can see it.
So I want to just correct a couple things. First of all, I was at that meeting. Nobody from this board said you're good to go.
No, no, I never said that.
On the, on the old plans, okay? They said, maybe, Maybe if you were to use glass in the windows Instead of the screens and build inside, Then maybe it might work. But they never indicated they did need.
Misunderstanding.
So, so.
We were waiting for you to come back.
So there may have been a misunderstanding, But this board didn't misunderstand anything, okay? And they were very clear. We can check the minutes to be sure that's true. But I have a specific requirement. Number two, No one from this board ever said The back of the house is fair again. I guarantee.
No, 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 that wasn't it. It was, it was brought to my attention from Paul again. I left hall duties. I'm not the person for this. I'm a builder. I, I know, I'm a communicator, but, but not one of, you know, I have too much passion for what I do, but please, with all due respect. That's how it was presented. I certainly just will say, hey, I'm gonna go buy three thousand dollars worth of windows and slap them in there. That's not what I do. But now that we're here and we can, you know, maybe save some time, what do I do?
So, so what you just said to us before was if, if I take those screens out and put glass in exactly the way it is, Then maybe we'd accept it. And you have, except for that one window.
Yes.
So that's where I am. So I guess I'm asking my board, if you were to take that window out. Now, the ventilation is not our problem. I mean, you know, that's, that's, that's a building thing. I, I don't know what to tell you about that. But if he were to take that window out and replace it with a solid pane to look exactly like the porch did before.
Very close, not too.
Very close, right. I mean, the only thing that's different is the window versus the screen. Would you feel comfortable about, would you feel comfortable with that? Ken, what are your thoughts on that? Jenny, what do you think?
I would consider that to be compatible.
Okay. So that, that one window, I think is really the issue that I see here.
Sun deal.
Okay. I just want to say, I was there on site today. You've done an amazing job. It's spectacular. I did. It's, it's absolutely beautiful. While I was at the back door, the, the guys were all there doing.
I did see you, though.
It was around lunchtime because I had to go to work at noon, so it was around noon. But I just want to say, it's, it's extremely well done and very, very professional. It's beautiful, really beautiful. But going back, so what we do here is Can we put out a motion to state exactly what I said, said, and then vote on that? Would you feel comfortable with that? Basically, I'm gonna say exactly how you've done it, except for that one window has got to be.
I have to ask because my client would ask. What if he says no?
What if who says no? Okay, so.
I'm just asking the question. Do we have an option?
They could get an approval tonight of that. We would never have to come back, okay? Subject to them wanting to do that. If they decide they don't want to do it, then you, then you'd come back for a different approval.
Which looks like I'm wasting my time, or they're wasting their time.
This is the toughest job that any board in this village has to do, okay? People buy a piece of property and they fully expect that they're going to be able to do whatever they think They think is appropriate for the property. All of these board members have training in this thing. They've done it for years. Jenny's a very experienced architect. If we have any questions as a board, we reach out to a different architect. So when we do this stuff, it's not whimsical, and I don't, I don't, I don't even say it's whimsical. But it's, it's really fully guided. But it's, it's really fully guided by our code. The Secretary of Interior Standards, the guidelines, this is all. A matter of luck, and, and the real, and I'm just gonna get away so far. Real problem we have in this village is educating people who are coming into the village. So we try our best, we reach out to the Realtors. Who are, by the way, not our best friends in this enterprise, because they, instead of selling this like a benefit. Because there's a huge benefit, the property values are astronomical, or one re- for. A principal reason, which is this porch and their work and their diligence. So that's why your, your, your owners are feeling so frustrated. Is because they're being caught between what they want to do. And what the property needs to protect it.
Yeah, that being said, had they known this, they made it very clear, they would have looked somewhere else.
Yeah.
They've dumped over three quarters of a million dollars in their house, they bought it for eight hundred, it doesn't warrant.
And that's, that's exactly why we try to get to the Realtors, and it's to tell them, to tell potential buyers, that you are buying in a historic preservation district.
Don't tell the Realtors, because all the Realtors call me, so.
But they need to know that, so that, so that residents that go inside, they are not frustrated, feel like they've been, you know, blindsided.
I think the good news for the owners is they're almost done.
Yeah, they're close.
Yeah.
Well, I, I, we understand the frustration, but, we, this board has to do its job, wait, the property values are gonna fall off.
I will just add that this is the second application in the last six months that's come in. Where the applicant has been unhappy. And in my opinion, you know, so, an architect and a preservation architect. The issue is, they dealt with an architect. Who made no effort to contact the village and understand what the, what the guidelines are. What are the parameters in the Village of Pittsburgh, and as an architect, any project that we ever went into. We did not just look at the New York State Building Code, we looked at the local ordinances. And that's where Mr. Morabito shares a significant. Uh, responsibility for this problem, is that, as far as I, he never came here with any, well, he did, he did come here with. Designs, but we, I would consider them schematic designs, because he never came back.
Yeah.
He was.
So there was a big misunderstanding, and that's exactly what happened. So certainly, you know, if it was on a side street, somebody might try to sneak it, I'm right on Main Street, I have, you know, I got more pictures being taken on a daily basis. Of this house and this project.
And that house is a significant house in the village.
It is, it is, and that being said, you walked through it, so you, you can appreciate the, the amount of money they spent.
And even the outside of the house is very grand, and it's, it's very prominent.
Okay, so before we discuss that, yes, I will agree to replace that window with a single pane of glass, thoroughly broken, blah, blah, blah.
So what I will do, so what we'll do is, I will make a motion for that, and for some reason, if you go back and the, and the owner says, no, I don't want to do that. Then we'll deal with it then.
No problem.
Okay?
We'll leave the application open.
Yeah, leave it open.
Yeah, further, okay, if they want to come back.
And do something different, for some reason, they want, they don't like that idea, we, it will be open for, for that, okay?
Perfect.
Okay, so, I make a motion, and here's my motion, how much you want to do it, do you want to do it?
I made a motion. Uh, of the meeting of the HDB on August ninth, uh, uh, to, to two thousand twenty-one. Following motion was made, uh, to approve.
No, wow.
Well, approved as. Is.
With a modification.
With modifications for fifty-seven South Main Street in the porch addition.
Presented by Mr. Gattano.
With Gattano.
Right.
Uh, as applicant. Fifty-seven South Main Street.
So they.
The modification is.
The modification is.
The modification is a single pane glass in the corner window.
Not the corner, it's the one.
Oh.
It's.
To replace the double case.
Closer to the door.
Say, replace the double.
The north, the north window on the west side.
Right, northwest.
Northernmost window on the west side of the porch.
With, with a, which is currently a double casement with a.
Single pane glass.
To re- to represent the original opening.
So, so this is gonna include the wood that's behind all the railings.
That's what's there now, that's right, so.
That's, I mean.
Yeah, that's right, as, as, yes, as that. Do we have a second? My second, okay, remember Mauro?
Yes.
Remember Paulak?
Yes.
Remember Sarah?
Yes.
And Sherpa Senko?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
Perfect. All right, now let's discuss the very passionate idea of this house being painted white.
Yeah.
If, it'll be a simple conversation with them, do you have any jurisdiction? Is what he wants me to ask you, on the color, and being a painter, if you don't. He's certainly gonna continue to paint it white, you know, he's gotten frustrated that he spent twenty-two hundred bucks the last month. I've had a, a meeting with the mayor and Steve, she put a stop worker order on this, on July tenth.
Yeah.
So that machine's been sitting there, and a little me getting an answer quickly, so I can continue, I certainly can unpaint it. So, a simple question, and then I certainly want to be respectful of everybody else's thought.
Our lawyer.
So. I'm gonna kick this back to the board, we have jurisdiction. So, u- 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 under the following circumstances. If a normal application of a stucco exterior. Is to apply. The color of the stucco when they're mixing up the cement. And not to paint it after the cement goes up. When that would be a modification of an exterior architectural feature, and we would have jurisdiction. However, if the normal practice in the community is to put up the cement and then paint it. So that it's not a modification of an exterior architectural detail, then we would not have jurisdiction. So that's why the question is whether or not. The normal application of stucco is what, is by mixing the color in with whatever color you choose.
No, I mean, in today's day, we use Ethis, which is a, a direct applied product with color in it. Um, so we've kind of deemed away from stucco, because stucco gets painted in, you know, and. All over this village, I mean, the stucco brick is painted everywhere you look, there's a ton of it. Um, and again, with all due respect, I would have never just started painting this house just because I wanted to, I know I have a client who's painting it. And I'm, I'm, and I'm honestly getting to know the board, and now I'm in the village now, working more often, so. I want to be respectful of all of these things, and certainly have some knowledge, so, you know, the same thing with thirty-six Monroe Avenue, so, I just painted it. I mean, tell me, I didn't change the siding, because it was old clapboard and cedar shake, so I just painted it, and here it was, no problem. The windows are wood, it's all dilapidated, it's been leaking, we did repairs.
So, so we have jurisdiction over materials change, so there's been a question as to whether painting stucco. Changes the material to a painted surface versus a dyed material surface. So that's kind of where the language gets a little.
Well, I'm, so I, I frame it a little bit.
Okay.
I frame it the way I just framed it, which is. If, if the normal historic application process for stucco.
Historically.
It is, is historical, I mean, this stucco in particular.
Right.
Was dyed rather than painted, and that was the normal. Way of doing business, and it still is the normal way of doing any business for structures in a historic district. Then if you paint over it, that's modification of an art, of an exterior architectural.
Yeah, so this is not dyed, this is stucco that's intended to be painted.
What makes you say it's stucco that's intended to be painted?
No, it's, it's Portland and sand mix, it's, there's no dye in there to pick the color, it's just stucco, it's just Portland and sand.
And that's what stucco traditionally was, you're talking, talking about Ethis, just so the board knows. Ethis is a, a exterior insulated. Uh. The I S, insulating system. So what happens with that, they put styrofoam up on the wall.
That wasn't what I meant, I, I mean, the product that's applied to, so that the actual.
I'm just explaining, like, the modern, modern stucco is not typically. Stucco, it's not Portland cement stucco, stucco.
Yes.
Is Portland cement.
It is, it is.
That's applied directly onto either wood lap or expanded metal lap. That's, or, it might be a clay tile, it might be brick. So the stucco is the finish, it's Portland cement, it's lime, it's water, if it's not gonna be gray. Historically, a pigment would have been added to it. Um, downtown in Cornhill, the D A R house, has bright white stucco, well, it's bright white. Because they used white Portland cement, and they used marble dust. Is the additional aggregate for coloring, otherwise, they would have used any number of natural material. Uh, pigments in the stucco, so traditionally, stucco was gray. Or it was an additive was, yeah, an additive was included for color. There are two houses on Sutherland Street that are stucco, and they are gray. I lived in a, a very small, um, and those are, those are more high-style houses than my little house on Lincoln. I lived in a house on Lincoln that was stucco, and it was painted when we moved in, I don't know when it was painted. But it was a very modest style, as opposed to the high-style homes that we're talking about on Monroe. And the other two on Sutherland Street, there are also brick buildings that are painted, and typically, historically. Brick buildings that were painted, were painted because the brick was soft, it was manufactured at a time. When the kilns that fired the brick, what took it from a mixture of wet clay. To hard brick, were not capable of the very high temperatures that are, that they can be achieved now. So the brick was soft, and it was quartz, and it was painted because it was quartz, historically. And when you say there are all these painted, uh, stucco and brick buildings, I'm telling you how the. How at least painted brick buildings.
So let's talk about preservation, because that's why we're here, this house was built in eighteen-something, right, nobody really knows, eighteen-twenty-one, twenty-four, twenty-five. Its original siding is clapboard, okay, stucco was done sometime later.
Stuccoed over, uh, the, um, the original Sutherland House is the stucco house that's down here on Monroe Avenue. And it was also, uh, modernized by putting, um, stucco on.
So, having given you that, my view of a law like in jurisdiction. Unfortunately, this board doesn't make that jurisdictional determination. This attorney doesn't make a jurisdictional determination, the code enforcement officer makes the jurisdictional determination. He may or may not ask me my opinion. But if he were to ask me my opinion, at this point in time, after hearing. You know, how stucco is historically applied and treated in a colored scheme. I would say this board has jurisdiction, so, but that's not my fault, so what I'm telling you is. That we are going to have to wait for the code enforcement officer to give us an opinion on the jurisdictional issue. Um, now, for the purposes of tonight, so that you don't have wasted your trip for that. Um, I would, I would suggest we explore two paths, one path is we don't have jurisdiction. The other path is we might have jurisdiction, or.
Or we do.
We do have.
We do, or we don't, right, so let's talk about that.
The other path is we do have jurisdiction, in which case, you could explore with the board the options going forward. James or.
Are you saying that Steve will be the individual who determines whether or not we have jurisdiction?
But Steve needs to hear exactly what we just talked about, the original, so Steve needs to understand first, and then he will decide whether.
You know, that's just the way the village law is set up, somebody has got to make an initial determination. Which is then subject to root review. At the zoning board of appeals level, and then ultimately, Article seventy-eight proceeding, people are happy.
Okay, I'll let that happen, here's the other issue I have. Once you determine who or can or why the house has been painted.
Some of it, just the one part.
Yeah, a portion of it, yes, so what do you do, that's, you can't unpaint it, and then if you tell him what color to paint it, then he's gonna really lose his mind.
Well, we're not gonna tell him any color, if it can't be painted, it can't be painted.
Well, it's already painted.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna also suggest that it may be possible to, uh. Clean the stucco, wash the stucco, you're not gonna sandblast it, you're not gonna.
We've, we've done that, and that's why we found so many leaks, and we decided to repair it and put a coat of paint on it to let it last another hundred years. I mean, the whole idea of doing it was.
The paint isn't gonna keep the water out, it's the stucco that is.
No, we're using a special last merrick paint, and yes, it will, it'll, it'll seal it, it'll seal it, it's, it'll stop it's cracking, it'll stop its deterioration, that's all.
There's also an issue about putting a sealant on historic masonry.
We're talking about reusing the appropriate paint from, a rep from Sherwin-Williams, so unless you really know a lot about paint, I can't really tell you, he told me what to use.
I, all I'm saying is, that the very first preservation brief put out by the National Park Service. Uh, is regards waterproofing and water sealants on historic masonry. So if you put a material on there that is in fact waterproof, I don't care what Sherwin-Williams does. They don't, they're not specialists in, in historic preservation, that would be the absolute wrong product to put on there.
In your opinion, sorry.
No, I'm sorry, would, uh, you go to the National Park, go on your computer and Google National Park Service Preservation Briefs. And you will see that preservation number one is lengthy and talks about waterproofing on historic masonry, it's not me.
Okay, so I guess you need to think about what, how we undo this, and, and painting it is. He's, it's gonna be ridiculous, because I'm gonna try to paint it to match the, the existing. Deteriorating stucco, so, how could he repair it, by putting new stucco on top of it, he'd have to stucco the entire house. Now, if I stucco the entire house, he's gonna put a color in it, because you can or can't, and there you go with the jurisdiction, so. I'm just, I'm just telling you, it, it, you know, I, I, I'm not even one to argue here, I'm gonna let them handle it, Paul was supposed to be here tonight, too. I'm glad we were, so, I can understand that, you need, you all need to understand, I want to do the right thing as well, so, you know, truly, I don't certainly need. I got enough stress in my life.
I know, I know.
You know, but, so.
If Mr. Morabito wants to have a discussion about it, or if he needs informa- if he needs to know where to look for the information.
No, regarding the paint, he is not involved, the owner is, and so, I know that you've sent out correspondence with him today.
Yeah.
In consideration, he asked me, you know, it was an ask, and if that's the question, his answer is no.
As far as what, wanting to meet with us?
No, as far as, yeah, as far as wanting to meet, as far as changing the color of the house to its original state, so, that's what he kind of said to me.
So I guess, I guess that. So, I guess where we have to go now is, we have to find out if we have jurisdiction, and that's through meeting with Steve. And then that, basically, it's either, yes, we do, and if that's the case, then we have to come up with a way. That we save the rest of the original stucco, and make the part that was painted match somehow.
Yeah.
If, if it's no, then you guys go to town, right, I think that's where we are, is that correct?
I, I just want to add that, you know, if you put a water barrier on stucco. Like Jenny was saying, then when the vapor tries to leak out of the house like it normally does, it's stucco.
That's right.
All right, well.
Or, or, or the wood frame structure begins to rot because the moisture is trapped inside the wall.
Okay, so.
Better, you don't want a better vapor barrier on the outside than you've got on the inside, and unless you've taken down plaster and. Put a vapor barrier there, you're creating a. And unless you've taken down plaster and put a vapor barrier there, you're creating a.
I've taken, yeah, there's a, the majority of it's all closed cell insulation, so.
Okay, so the plan is gonna be, Steve is back from vacation on Monday? Yes, okay. So we will set up a meeting with our board?
No, we can just refer to questions.
Well, we need to have him understand the background. So we can't just ask him without him hearing what we've talked to um everyone about. So I, I think he needs to hear it first and then he can make his decision. He needs to hear the whole story. So how do we do that?
Of course, the applicant is invited.
Yes, absolutely. And we would, I think the applicant's plan, I'm moving here Saturday, correct?
Yeah, they're, they're in town this week.
I mean, I would really, really love to have them involved, because you know, we want them to be happy here, obviously. And I know it's been very stressful for them.
Yeah.
And we want them to know, we wanna work with them, um, and you know, appreciate everything they've done. And I would love to have them here, because I think that if they understood where we were coming from, it would help them as well. So how do we do that?
You're asking we set up another meeting?
I would like to have, if possible, the applicant and you and even Mr. Morbidio come with, with the building inspector and us as a board and Jeff. So I think that's really important for us, because like I said, that's in a significant home.
Um, we could do it on Tuesday the seventeenth.
I'd have to ask with that, but I'd certainly, I, I don't know if I need to really be involved. We should probably have this conversation between the board and Steve to find out if I even need to be around and have this conversation, whether you have or have not jurisdiction. And, and I don't think they're in a position right now to wanna meet with anybody.
Okay, all right, see, that's a good idea.
They're moving, they're stressed out.
We'll do, we'll do us with Steve and then we'll decide, because Steve's gonna be the one to say yes or no. And then we'll, whatever that comes up then, we'll have them get themselves in and then we'll see if they wanna.
I mean, you wanna have a meeting, that's fine. We don't really need it. I mean, we can.
Steve needs to understand.
We can.
Steve needs.
We can all.
Input.
Right, so we can provide the input to him individually without doing a meeting. If you want, however, if you'd rather we meet, then have a meeting. I'm not telling you what to.
I mean, I would like, I would like to have him well informed and I would like to have as many people there as possible on our board. So that's, that's my thought. It's, it's very important.
The client has a right to be there.
Yeah, yeah.
So then therefore, since the client, and just the public has, the public has to be here. So that means that we've gotta post it and it needs three days, right? Okay, so. What you're, where are we? So you're talking about next Tuesday the seventeenth?
Earlier in the day.
So the question is, does it have to be in the evening? Can it be during the day? Do people have problems during the day? Could we meet at a lunchtime or sometimes it doesn't?
Depends on the board.
Okay. All right, so we'll figure that out. We don't have to waste your time. We'll try to figure it out, but I would like, I would rather not do it in the evening. I'd like to try to do it in the daytime sometime. So we'll.
How early in the day can everybody?
We'll, we'll.
Tuesday, Tuesday the seventeenth, actually, I, I'm not here.
You're not here, okay. Well, we'll figure it out another day, but we'll.
I'll be here in the morning. Okay, I'm taking my grandkids camping and we'll.
For me, like earlier in the morning.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll try to figure that out.
Yeah.
Or you can set out a couple of days or times and we'll try to step on it up. Okay. Yeah.
Uh, how do I find out?
Uh, I can contact you. Um, do you wanna leave your email address?
Yeah, perfect.
Okay.
Gaetano Abate, G A E T A N O, A double B A T E at yahoo dot com.
Okay, G A E T A N O, A B V A T E at yahoo.
Perfect.
Okay, Mr. Gaetano, thank you so much for your time. We really appreciate that. Thank you.
I just like this pass a lot. I think this. Yeah, you are really great.
Yeah.
That's beautiful.
Yeah. I hope it's uh word with the head here.
It will be, it will be. Okay, thank you.
Afternoon is much better than morning. I'm off on court in the morning.
Afternoon's better for you? Okay, we'll, we'll figure that out. We'll, we'll finish our, and then our rest of our, our poor applicants have been sitting there forever. We will finish that and then we'll talk about it again. Okay.
I just, I just looked up the only addresses on.
Yes.
Application.
Correct.
I know, I'd be surprised if they don't live in the preservation district right now. I know, I know that, I know the area where they are.
I mean, you could have this conversation.
Right, yeah. Okay, so the fifty-two Heatherhurst Drive people are here from a holdover.
No.
Hi, thank you for being patient. We apologize obviously.
We appreciate it.
I'm sure you got quite entertaining.
Educational.
Always is. Okay, so.
We hope.
Yeah. Okay.
So you are here for a second time?
Yes.
Yeah.
Steve, Steve and I went to the property, um, were came in Sunday.
Hello.
Um, to look at the windows. The existing windows are wood windows. The wood sash appear to be in very good shape. They are modern wood windows and the operation is not the traditional, you know, double hung weights. It's not even, uh, I'm not sure they even have tapes. There's a metal.
Spring, spring loaded maybe? Yeah.
I don't think so.
Okay.
They may, they may be, but they have, um, you know, the channel that the window sash runs in is metal and I'm not familiar with it.
A circular tube like thing?
No, do they have, does it have screws in it?
No.
Does it kind of push in?
Yes, I think so.
Yeah, so.
I've heard of something.
Yeah.
There's usually screws that you can, that you have to screw in to get the windows out. Screws in the inside of the metal.
Uh, we didn't see any of those. My, my, my request, my, my personal request to the applicant would be to contact uh G and G Windows. They are a window repair company that should not be asked to look at historic windows. They do a good job on modern windows.
So your, so your suggestion is to have them.
I'm suggesting that the sash are in great shape. It's the operational mechanism that appears to be the biggest issue. Um, and I would request, I, it's my suggestion that the board request that the owners contact G and G Windows and have them come and take a look to discuss the possibility of repair.
What are your thoughts?
Uh, yeah, I, I wasn't sure how you're defining modern windows. They're eighty years old. So modern meaning.
Modern is post-war, post-World War II.
It's modern for us.
Yeah.
Yeah, the house is built in nineteen sixty and these are the original windows to the house.
Yeah.
I, I don't know how you, if operationalizing very good shape. But I'm the only one in the house that can open the windows. Half of them I can't. Oh, half of them we leave permanently closed, because they're inoperable. Um, my wife can't open them, my kids can't open them. Um, and they, you know, air comes through and flies through, so. Um, you know, it's, it's, my kids play with their neighbor at thirty-seven Courtney Circle, who is post-war house and replace their windows with Anderson Renewal, just like I wanna do. So, um, um, you know, they're my neighbors. They love their windows. They love their new windows. And I hate our windows.
Sure, you got it.
Um, so, um, you know, um, from the street, they'll look the same. They're, they have the crosshatches or whatever they're called. They're, they're white.
Yeah.
So from the street, they'll look exactly the same. I mean, maybe some expert in windows could tell the difference. It's a nineteen sixty home. It's not a historical home. It happens to be in the village. So, you know, homeowner, I wanna improve my house. I wanna improve its resale. I wanna have operational windows. I don't wanna limp along and try to salvage these eighty-year-old windows. So I'm not terribly interested in repairing them. I'd um rather just go forward with our plan.
So let me give you a little feedback to what you said.
Sure.
Um, so you are in a post-war home. However, you are still in a preservation district. So therefore, we, you abide by all the guidelines of, even though I know that people say, oh, you know, I'm not, I don't have a historic home. So that's, that's where we come in. Um, we don't want you to limp along either. We want the window repaired or replaced to be usable, something that you're happy with. Okay, so, so I just wanna make that clear. Um, however, our, we, our guidelines are always trying to repair other than replace. We always try to go that way, route, route first. The people next door to you may, their windows may have been so bad that they couldn't repair, repair them. And that's made probable why they have new ones. Um, so we always encourage repair. If they can't be repaired to the satisfaction that you'd like, then we would consider the replacement, but we want to give those windows a chance to be fully functional and usable, not limping along, but really good windows. And think that many times people underestimate the ability of repairing um to get them to where you want them to be. So we're asking if you would consider to have somebody come and take a look at them to see if they can repair them so that they work like new windows. And if they don't and you're not happy, then we can revisit, you know, revisit the, the replacement. But can you give us a chance to get those windows repaired and see if it's something that's agreeable to you? Just because we haven't done that yet. And we always ask our residents to please take a look at repair first before we just go right to replace.
So if, if I would prefer not to do that, I, I'm still required to do that?
No, you're not required. We can vote on the application right now as is. Um, if it's turned down, we could also leave it open, right? Can we leave it open and then you could go and visit the, you know, have them come out and take a look at it? We could go that route, is that correct, Jeff? So, yeah, we can do, we can vote on it if you'd like, the way, the way it is now and.
Yeah, I, I'd rather not get them repaired, so I'd, I'd prefer to have that opportunity that my neighbor had.
So I'm, I'm wondering about the approval of your neighbor. Was that an approval from this board?
Yes.
Um, have we seen the minutes of that approval?
I don't know what neighbor, what address or anything.
Thirty-seven Courtney Circle, thirty-seventh Courtney Circle.
Do you know what that approval was?
I don't know, within the past year, year and a half.
Okay, so it's recent.
So we should certainly pull that information up.
Before this board makes a decision on this application, I want to know.
What happened during that?
Of how the meeting got approved, because we, we wanna have to treat these places similarly, similarly, if they were similarly searched.
Correct, right, right, correct.
So before we vote, I want the board to know the answer to that question.
Mm-hmm. Good, good point.
So how accessible is that Marina to pull those minutes up? No?
I, yeah, I'm not, I can't do that.
Okay, so.
Where are, are they? Have those minutes been approved, you know?
I, I don't know. I, I have to look through all of the minutes and search by address to find this particular application.
Okay, all right. Um.
Yeah.
What, I'm sorry, sir?
No, no, I mean, my kids play, my, my kids see our kids every day. I mean, we, she's my neighbor. She's six, she's six thousand down, yeah.
You tell them what it was?
I, I don't, I don't know the data.
No, 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 I'm sorry, sir. I mean, you misunderstood, no, you misunderstood the entire.
Oh, I'm clear.
No, go ahead. I'm not saying that you would work to, to know the data. That's.
I thought, I thought you would have that information in front of you.
Yeah, we don't have.
Okay, sure.
This is a very critical part of your application for us to get it right to follow the precedent that this board has previously set is very important to you. So I'm suggesting that we ought to know what that approval was before we act on your approval, because I wouldn't want it to be a denial if you are exactly in the same situation your neighbor is. That would be very, right? So that's my, that's my proposal, is that we know, we get a look at those minutes.
It sounds like it's gonna be a denial. Based on.
Oh, no, 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 okay, all right.
We shouldn't vote at all.
No, 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 okay.
We could just hold this over again.
I just want to be sure.
That the board has.
That if you're not, so, so the option were, okay, I'm gonna go look at repair, in which case, we're done for. But when you say, I want this application voted on, which is what you've done, and certainly you're right. I wanna make sure that we're on the, a solid legal footing with everything we've got to know before that decision is made. Okay?
Sure.
That's, that's where I'm coming from. I have no idea how.
So in order to do that.
I don't, and I don't vote.
In order to do that, we would have to keep this open until we can find the minutes from your neighbors?
Which should be a short search, because you can go home and say to your neighbor, do you remember when that was approved? And she said, yeah, I think it was around blah, 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 blah.
Even the year would be.
Yeah, the timeframe would be super helpful.
So when we have a timeframe, then we'll.
We can find it then.
We'll search it.
And, and if you don't have the timeframe, we can find it anyway.
You can't search on an address.
No. That's not the way that the program is set up. You gotta search on a.
On a timeline.
You guys, you gotta know, see, our minutes are.
Date oriented.
Date oriented, so I, all the meetings, so last month's meeting will have a record of everything that happened at last month's meeting, to know what happened at last month's meeting. You gotta go to minutes, so. If you can help us narrow it down, then we'll find the answer quicker. If you can't help us narrow it down, we're gonna find the answer anyway, just slower. That was the only point.
I, I think I could probably, I thought the address would be adequate, but I could, I could prob, I can ask her when it was.
Just ask her in phone, for Marina and, and say, uh, they think it was around spring of whatever year or summer.
Yeah.
Or fall, or we think it was either December or, or January. We don't know.
Yeah, but just get us closer.
If you guys narrow it down, you don't have to. I mean, we will find it.
And I communicate that how?
To Marina, call the village.
Yeah.
Five eight six.
Call the village.
Say one.
Sure, sure.
Well, we, you know, because I could probably find these fairly quickly. Um, do we want to say invite them back for this eighth, seventeen or whatever special meeting we're setting up for the previous?
We certainly can.
Invite them back. Does it have to wait another month?
Sure.
Yeah.
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 So.
We're having a special meeting. We're having a special meeting, so you don't have to wait another month. We'll bring you back and.
Oh, and that might be during the day, et cetera. Okay, sure. So, all right.
We're gonna do whatever's convenient.
It's, it's fun, I can, I can figure it out.
Okay, and we'll let you know and then this way you don't have to wait for another month.
So five eight six four three three two. And ask for Marina.
Five eight six four three three two Marina.
Marina.
Got it.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. Thank you.
I would just like to add one thing. You said your house is a historic. But what's important about your house and the other houses up there is that this, the, the notion of historic districts and historic preservation is not just about the high-style fancy houses. It's about everything. And it's about the, the social and cultural development of the community, not just the architectural development. So the houses up there were built after World War II. And I think the ones probably on Greenwood Lane, which are smaller, were probably built earlier than yours. But all that neighborhood is just the growth of the community and how it changed. This was a, this was a little village in an agricultural community. And over time, it changed. And your neighborhood represents that cultural change. And that's what's important. And that's what makes your neighborhood historic, because it speaks to the sociological and the cultural development of this community.
The, the, the only person who experiences the windows are, are me and my family and people who come into the home. And our experience of the windows is nobody can open them but me and that, that they're super, super drafty and they're, and they're dysfunctional. And so anybody passing by on the streets, I mean, this isn't cheap stuff we're talking about.
No, I know.
These are really, this is really nice replacement windows. And it will, it will improve the quality of the home and improve its resale and it'll improve the home.
Okay.
And um, it's almost unimaginable that a new owner who eventually buys it from me will say, oh, boy, you don't have the nineteen sixty windows that didn't work here. You've got these Anderson renewal windows. So from the standpoint of people experiencing our home, it's gonna be the same experience, except for me, the homeowner. So that, that's where I'm coming from.
Unless you, unless you have a true historian that comes in and buys your house and said, oh, you've got the Anderson, that's the new stuff that's made cheaply now as compared to the original windows that were made really well. If you talk to people about, you talk to people about the woods.
I don't think that's the case.
Well, I'm just saying, so you're, you're on one side.
It's a, it's a wood, um, some, it's a wood blank composite material. It's, it's not cheap stuff. And um, so.
I, I understand that alone. I would go crazy if I couldn't open my windows. I totally understand. But as Jeff was saying, we have to be. But as Jeff was saying, we have to be sure we treat things equally and we evaluate people.
It's, it's, it's not, it's not that important. I mean, at the end of the day, it's just, it's just window. I mean, it, it will be fine either way. But, yeah, I, I will definitely, I will definitely ask my neighbor and come back at seventeen and see where we're.
Alright, sounds great.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, yeah.
Hey, last of the night. Well, this is an information only. Yes, this is Georgia.
I'd also thank you so much for squeezing me out.
Oh, no problem.
You really hung in there.
I know, right?
I'm shaking.
She's like, oh, no, there I go.
Because I have a window issue.
I know.
No, but you know what? You're doing the right thing by coming in for, for information.
Before I get too far into this. As you have seen, I'm here to ask permission instead of asking for forgiveness.
That's right, that's the way to do it.
So I did a one Elm drive, built in fifty-three. The windows are Anderson original casements. I've had window guys come out several times in the past ten years and, you know, try to finagle them and get them. I can't get them closed anymore. My, I, I live on the first floor, my master bedroom's on the first floor. My, one of my case windows won't close this much. I've got this much space. So I'm very insecure in the house. Um, I had a gentleman that does all of my window work. In fact, you should probably get him, um, as, as someone.
Looking for windows?
Who are? I don't know, he's very busy.
Who is he?
Be able to.
What is his name?
What is his name?
Yeah, believe me.
His name is Lucian Waters. And he.
I, I, I think he does replacement windows and vinyl siding.
He's, he's, he's really good, trustworthy and good. Now, if I gave his name to Steve, he asked me for it.
He does, he does replacement windows and vinyl siding. That's, that's.
It's his thing.
Okay.
Okay, so anyway, I can't close them anymore. Um, they're seventy, they're seventy years old. They're as old as me. So, and I know how I feel, so I don't, I, I get it.
So we're ready to repair you, to replace you.
I was already placed ones. I was already placed ones. Anyway, um, I started preliminarily looking into this and realized I better put the brakes on and come in here.
Yeah.
Um, casements are a fortune. Wood casements are out of sight, especially now with the price of lumber. But wood casements are the most expensive windows you can, replacement windows you can get.
And yours are wood casement now.
I'm sorry?
Yours are wood casement now that are in there.
They're wood now, yes, they're original, so they're wood.
Yeah.
Um, and they're rotted, so they're messy. Um, I got two quotes, and one was for forty thousand, and the other was for thirty-seven thousand. I can't, I just can't do it. So both of the gentlemen that came out said, casements are more expensive. Why don't you try the double hungs? They're almost, oh, not quite half, a little more than half. And I know my casements, I know you like to replace in kind, I understand that.
What's your street address again?
One Elm Brook, it's a little cape. So double hungs would be fine, architecturally, I believe. Um, and I could afford them. You know, I wouldn't have to sleep with my banker. That's the biggest thing, I don't want to.
So the double hungs would be wood as well?
I'm sorry?
The double hungs would be wood, wood as well?
Well, you can't, you, wood, you can't, it's almost impossible to get them. Um, I, I had, um, I have Ratchet to Colonial coming out tomorrow. I've had Anderson, two quotes from Anderson, they're going to be vinyl wrapped wood. And there are two houses on my street that have, um, one is number five Elm Brook. And the other number seven, maybe nine or eleven Elm Brook. Um, they both have vinyl wrapped wood. It seems to be the most, um, affordable. It looked, I, I've gone, gone by both of those houses several times and looked, they look nice. I think the mutton bars are the problem, from what I understand. That, you know, the, the mullions aren't the same as an old wooden window. Um, but there's, there's a point where it becomes not possible, it's just not possible. I couldn't, I can't spend forty.
Do you have to replace all of them? Can you do some?
All of them. Well, if I want it to look, if you want it to look nice, initially I was going to do just the side that faces.
Right, right.
Uh, ran and the front. Well, I've only got ten windows in my house, so I could, I could do five, but I might as well do, I mean, they got to be all be done. I got upstairs windows that won't close too.
The reason, the reason, the reason we asked that, or the reason I asked that, is because we've had other residents come in that have talked to replacement window people.
Sure.
And they come in and say, oh, we got to do everything. And we are always, we're conservatives, saying, let's take care of the ones that are not working and replace them in kind and save the ones that are still there and make them workable. So, you know, we look at it differently, you know. The window guys, they come in, they want to sell you all the windows in the whole house. So at first.
My one guy wouldn't do that to me. He's, he's common, he's had his guy go around the side of the house, and he had the big suction cups. He had his guy outside pushing, and he had the big suction cups to bring. They're not replaceable. There's, there, I don't have a replaceable window in the house.
Are they, with a casement window, the, as we were discussing earlier, uh, not the hinge side, but the latch side tends to drop.
Drop, exactly.
And if you look across the head of the window, there will be a small space on the hinge side, and it gets bigger as you go along. And the outside, the latch side drags on the sill.
Mm-hmm.
Is that what happens at your house?
I don't know what the actual cause is, but I, I believe that's probably.
Well, do you notice that when you're trying to open and close the window?
No, I just notice they don't close. I, you know, I don't get into the engineering of it, I just can't, I can't close them.
I, I, given that they're Anderson windows and they're that old, I don't think there's any, because I, I was just reading up about casement windows recently, because my executive is. In order to correct that on an historic wood window, you take the window apart and you re-square the window. Because what happens is that instead of being square, it becomes a parallelogram.
Sure.
That's the issue with them.
I've got this all rotten wood too, though, it's rotten.
Yeah, well, I would, what I, so I was just asking about what the issue is. If the wood is rotten, then with windows.
Not all of them, not all of them, but there's.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I think it's, it's the issue of, um, new, more new growth wood. It's worse now, wood now is worse than even the wood from seventy years ago. Um, but I would, I would, in my opinion, I think you're better off with something like removal by Anderson than a, than a clad wood. Because what happens with clad wood is that the, where the cladding doesn't meet well, or if the seam breaks. And I've seen Anderson windows where the sill is clad on three, three of the five exposed sides. But the outside, which is the butt end of the wood, is, is completely exposed. And I've seen the wood rot all the way through the sill. I mean, it's, there's nothing there but the, but the wrapping, the wood is rotted through.
Yeah.
So my, if, if we get around to it, I mean, if this is where we go with this, I would not suggest a clad window.
So I guess my question would be, is, Casey asked you this, but should we go or could we go and take a look at your windows?
Could you come? Yeah, what you say? You bet your life.
Alright, so Jeff, give me, give me some notice, please, give me some notice so I can clean.
Well, I think that, I think the process that we're trying to develop here is a standard process. It's that there's an evaluation of one kind or another.
Exactly.
Which is the issue with our previous applicant, we went there. I think they, I think they can be repaired.
Alright, so let's, so how about that, Georgia? How about if we set up a time? I want to go out with you, so that's fine, we do. And anybody else who wants to join as well?
Everybody else, it's a meeting.
Yeah. Only two of you.
Oh, it's only, I thought it was more than three.
If there's three of you, it's a quorum, which means it's a meeting.
Okay, so then it'll have to be just me and Jenny, is that okay? You guys know the next one? Okay, so, um, well, Jenny and I will come out and take a look, because Jenny's.
I don't have my calendar, my, my phone doesn't have.
That's okay, we can, um, do you want to just call in and we'll set up a date that Jenny and I can come out and?
You want me to call here, or can I call you?
No, we'll have, we'll have call Marina.
I have, uh, anything that I'm apt to have going on is apt to be in the evening, except for next.
Good, I like that.
Except for next week.
I like that.
Next, next week, Tuesday through Friday, I'm camping with my grandkids.
Okay, alright, so Marina, Marina, can you set up a meeting with three of us?
Yeah, maybe, maybe you want to go over with windows.
Okay, so Georgia, call Marina, and Marina will set up a meeting for it. So Jenny and I can come to your house, and probably get it in the daytime. Okay, are you home during the day?
Sure.
Usually, okay, sure, alright.
Is it next week or so?
We're going to try to get there or so.
If we don't get there by, if we don't get there by Monday next week, it has to be the week after.
Okay, so we'll try to get there.
Do you have a phone number, direct phone number, or should I just call here?
Um, yeah, you would just call our office, which is five eight five, five eight six, four three three two, and ask for Marina.
Yes, for you, Marina.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Marina, Marina?
Marina, yes.
Free.
Why don't you suggest some times that are convenient for you?
I'll give, I'll give her two or three.
Yeah.
And then we.
Yeah, and I know for me, um, after twelve, after eleven-thirty is better, because I teach yoga all morning. So after, like, between twelve and four.
I'm flexible, so I can, I can work on this.
Alright.
Thank you, appreciate it, yeah, thank you so much for squeezing me out.
Thanks for taking your time.
Thank you for coming here first.
Thank you.
Well, I just thought I could go and, you know, start playing, but it's going to just.
No, thank you, so, okay, thank you very much. Okay, so let's get that date together that we could, um, whoever thinks that they would like to try to meet with Steve, or do it with Steve, to, when he can meet.
If it's during the day, he'll be here.
He'll be here, okay, so let's take a look at next week, you guys, whoever thinks they can be here, I'd like.
It can only be two of us, yeah.
Oh, well, no, because, because we're going to invite the applicant as well.
If, if you're noticing it as a whole meeting, all of you can come, if we don't, then it would be just.
Yeah, I think that I think, I think that we should have, because you know what? I would like the community to be here and, and hear the whole, because their perspective of the historical way that stuff was made, I mean, it just makes sense. And it does, alright, so, let's take a look at next week, Steve comes back on the sixteenth, right? That's on Monday.
Well, I'm go, I'm going.
You're going, hope we're settled. Okay.
So Tuesday's still active or not? No?
Tuesday's still active.
Seventeenth?
No, because Jenny's not here.
Okay.
I'm, I'm going to be packing the car and getting kids.
On the seventeenth?
On the seventeenth.
Or how about the sixteenth?
I could do the sixteenth.
Okay, so how about?
I could do any day, any day the week after, except for.
Let's, let's try the sixteenth so that we can get it, get it moving. Okay. Um, so Jenny, like, could we, could we do something like, I don't know, is, is it easy for you guys to do like lunchtime? Like, is lunchtime a good time? What do you think?
I don't, I don't care, I mean, I.
Can we, can we try to say like noon?
Yeah.
Well, Jeff said he's in court often in the morning.
No, 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 not noon.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Can we say at noon on the sixteenth? And then send them right by, well, Steve, you said it's going to be here, okay, so, we'll hear it here.
Noon, one, whatever, the one, the.
Let's say noon right now, and it's, it's got to be tweaked a little bit, but at least it can hold us up then.
Do we have enough time to notice this?
Oh, yeah. We would only need three days.
Three days, okay.
And then I guess we could also, Marina, if you send an email to the owner and let him know as well. And then we'll formally invite him to this meeting about.
I think if we could, are, are there any articles or any preservation briefs?
Exactly what you said, because I know you read that, and I read it too, but I don't remember where.
Well, I'm not, I'm not talking about the, although that would be very helpful.
Yes.
I'm talking about painting, the painting stucco issue.
So.
Yeah.
With waterproof paint.
No, we're talking about the mixing and the staining and.
Alright, alright, some, some, someone other than us that says.
Yes.
Yes.
The correct historic treatment.
Yes, yes, Jenny had it, yeah.
We have that, for the record.
Yes.
I will be a lot happier.
Yeah.
Because.
So Jenny, can you bring that with you?
I see.
And Marina can probably make a copy of it, if you're sure.
Well, actually, we had, if we had it in advance at the meeting, I know Jenny, you're doing a lot of work, but.
Well, let me look and see right now.
Yeah, I think she had it already, because I, I think I read it as well.
That's why I had that question.
We should, we should probably have cleaning and water, water repellent treatments of historic masonry. Let me look and see.
I, I feel that strategically, if the owners put the ceiling on, paint ceiling, it's going to make a stucco fail. You know, that's his number one urgent major issue right now.
That's a huge.
So, so the question is, is that what they put on?
That's what he said.
Right, so.
So that's what's on the rest of the, rest.
I don't know if he said the rest of that, she's not in the paint.
No, that's the one.
Just where it's painted.
The paint. The paint section.
But that is the white paint that's on there, is the steel.
Yeah.
It is?
Yes.
Or, or is he, did he seal it under, and then he painted it on top?
No, he, he, what I took from it was, this is paint that has a waterproof.
Alright, well, we'll find out.
So we have, there, there are two preservation briefs.
Might just, I'm emailing them to Marina? Can you just copy paste that exact link?
Yes, I can, I can download them and, and forward them to everybody.
Let's do that.
There's one on preservation and repair of historic stucco, and it will go through, uh, historical vehicles, stucco, stucco tradition in the United States.
What, what I'd like to see is when you send out this, this notice, a formal invitation to our meeting with the owners and then with all of us, if you can attach whatever Jenny's going to send you, then this way the owners can read it as well beforehand.
Yeah.
And then we can have it available with us at the meeting as well.
And the start background says not to.
Yes. Well, it's talking about, it talks about the material, the way it's tinted and the way it's mixed in, it's not sealed over.
Um.
Well, this, this ceiling over issue has, has moved this to a whole different level.
Because it's a material.
No, because he's going to, it's, it's going to ultimately result in the destruction of a, of a historic architecture.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's, that's a material, it's a destruction material. Remember, we talked about the fact that we can fan blast it and.
And they put in, the spray foam insulation is not to itself. I mean, it's great, it's great insulation, but there are so many issues with that material.